...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call please?
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Brower?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. So our new council member's last name is Pavoni, he'll let you get away with that once. He's gonna come after you. First item on the agenda is a very special presentation from Arise. Maggie, are you up to present that?
I'm up.
Karen, you wanna make the introductions?
Yes, it's actually five of us in 15 minutes.
Okay, that's fine.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm Karen Berksvik, the Human Services Manager for the city of Renton. I'm here tonight as part of the Arise presentation. Arise is a partnership, and with me are the other partners. Bob Blasner is one of the founders and has been head of the steering committee since its inception. Maggie Breen is with the Renton Ecumenical Association of Churches and is the executive director. Dwight Jackson is with Catholic Community Services. He's the South King County Shelter Program Manager. And Clarissa Mitchell is also with Catholic Community Services and is the program supervisor. So we're here to share with you the successes of Arise and do that in 15 minutes or less. So this is going to be the quickest you've ever seen Maggie talk. You go, girl. So with that, I give you a copy of the annual report. We decided that last year that not very many people knew about Arise and the successes of Arise, and then it was important to get the word out. So we collaboratively wrote that Arise report, and in that it has a variety of statistics and also what the partners are. For the public, they can get a copy of the annual report by going to the Catholic Community Services website, or they can call the Community Services Department, and I would be happy to send them a copy of the report. There's also copies in the back for anyone that would like one. You wanna talk about the partners?
Yeah. On the partners, one of the things we wanted to hit just briefly is what was the purpose of Arise? It was certainly to take homeless men off the streets of the city of Renton, put them into their next housing, their next step in housing. We started that in 2005 is when we actually started the first shelter. The program, a couple of folks at St. Anthony's came at the reach meeting, came to the meeting and asked if we were interested in hosting a shelter for homeless men. And the reaction was, well, we don't see any homeless men, we don't know there's a need. We were assured that there was a need, and we started the program in November of 2005. And the first year, we only went for five months, the winter shelter piece. After that first year, then, we were running around. We used a model that was being used by the congregation of the homeless in Bellevue. In the late 90s, they were running that program there. Home Shelter, which is a similar shelter in Kent, was started in 1997, and they used the same model also. When we came in, we looked around about making our own 501(c)(3) and decided that if we were gonna start the program in the fall, that we didn't have enough time to do. So we looked around to see who we could team with, and we went with Home. And so we joined, started off being Home. We were a program of Home at that time. CCS had been involved all along. We hired CCS then to do our interface with the men. We use a lot of local church congregations, they provide the space for the men to sleep in at night. We currently have had 11 churches that have hosted since we started the program. We also had a feeding program with them, we're gonna talk about that a little later, that that's now changed. But the feeding program, we used up to, we've had as many as 28 organizations involved with our feeding program. Not all churches, some have been, well, city of Renton is certainly one of our supporters. City of Renton has been working with us from the beginning, and particularly a lot of help from the fire department.
So I guess I'll just start off by just kinda talking about the intake process, or how we enroll men into the program. So we have a community presence for intake and case management for the program. The community presence is at St. Anthony's Church, and we had it there because, one, they're a partner of us, they've been there since the beginning, and they're accessible to the guys who need to get into the shelter, as well as who need to work on goals to help them move up out of that current circumstance area. We provide case management at St. Anthony's on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, and then we also, or intake from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, and then case management from 9:00 to 11:00. The intake process, it consists of just getting some basic demographic information from everyone. We do a criminal background check on everyone, just to make sure that there's no one there with any predatory behavior, so any recent violent offenses, any sexual offenses are screened out. And from that point, they're enrolled into the shelter. We provide everyone, or everyone is connected to a case manager. So that case manager's responsibility is to provide the men with the support needed to move out of that current circumstance. The role of the case manager requires building trust with the men, assisting, I mean assessing their needs, assisting in setting goals, providing motivation, encouragement, as well as accountability, which is a big piece of it, and gathering and connecting them to resources. So Carlisa was our case manager in 2012. We hired a new case manager last year, but she's no longer with us, so Carlisa's gonna speak about the successes and the role and responsibility of a case manager.
Good evening. So in being a case manager, one is being able to get the trust of the participants so that they will open up and be honest regardless of what, knowing that they won't be judged. And I like to do a holistic approach at looking at what got them there in the beginning. Once we found out what got them there, we began to deal with the issues, and so in 2012, we were able to successfully house 53 out of 186. And that was by getting them connected to mental health services, drug and alcohol treatments, counseling, some had medical issues. I've seen it go as far as one person actually got 14 years of back pay. He had been homeless and just lost his way, and with a little direction, he's now about to be a homeowner. So just building that relationship to learn enough about them to address what's really going wrong.
Participants can stay up to six months in the shelter, and with the agreement that with the monthly case management and daily chores, and there's zero tolerance for drugs and alcohol. In front of you are the statistics of the people that have been served in 2012 and 13, and the placement rate, we're very proud of, that is a big success of that program, how it's gone up each year. Do you wanna talk about how we're dependent on the?
We're very dependent on the local community. I mean, it's very important for a community to be involved in this work, because a lot of the men are from this area. Actually, 39 of the men declared that their last residence was here, but in talking to the men, the vast majority of them tell us that they're here because of supports or business. They were born and raised here, or have family nearby, medical providers are here, some go to school here, some work here. Others have just moved into the area just hoping for a better opportunity in life. So I would say like roughly 70% of the shelter residents have support or business here. So, I mean, I kinda look at it as technically, they're not homeless, they're homeless here in Renton, they're just unsheltered here currently in the area.
So Maggie's gonna talk a little bit about Arise, what it was before and what it is today.
The Renton Ecumenical Association of Churches has always been a partner of Arise, provided support both as host churches and as churches that provide food for the men. There's a lot going on in Renton right now, helping people who are without access to resources. And so last year, Karen and Dwight, Carlisa, and Bob and myself started talking about the sustainability of this program. What does it look like to continue to be able to provide meals and to provide what we need, given all the other places that we're asking volunteers to plug in? The outcome of that discussion was a consolidation of our meal program in Renton, so we now have what we're calling the Renton Meal Coalition. We ask those, the main providers of meals to come together, provide meals to those who are hungry out of one site, so that we can consolidate resources, volunteers, so that we can be more accessible, and start to write grants. Been very successful. Part of that discussion was to talk about what would it look like to serve the men of Arise from the Renton Meal Coalition. We decided to go ahead with that. So up until December, could you go back to that last round? Sorry, up until December, what had happened is we had a host church that provided space for one month a year, and then we had a support church that would come in and provide food. What we've done now, sometimes the host and the support church was the same thing. Starting in January, we still have the host church that operates exactly the same way, it still provides space for one month at a time for up to 25 men, and then the site manager is there providing services. What we're asking that host church to do is to step up and provide breakfast and lunch and snacks for the guys, and then we're asking the men to eat at the Renton Meal Coalition. And it's working really well. We started that in January, so the first month we did it was Salvation Army, and tested it out. This month, we're with St. Anthony's, and they are kind of our model church, they've shown us how to do this really, really well. We have a superstar there called Bryce Brown, who has organized everything, and what we've realized is that we just need one contact in the church who's prepared to organize the congregation to provide breakfast and snacks, which people are prepared to do, and then get organized to do that, and then they're asking the church, rather than cook and serve at your own church, go to the Renton Meal Coalition. And so what's happened in St. Anthony's, instead of cooking a meal for every night effectively for a month, because they would do, well, two months I think they were doing, what they're now doing is doing a meal once a month at the Salvation Army for 100 men, and providing breakfast, lunch, and snacks for a month for Arise. So we're doing more with less effectively, and the men like it because they're eating at 5:30 in the evening instead of 9 o'clock at night.
Help is needed. We need more host churches to house the men for 30 days. We're always looking for additional churches, and so if any church is out there that is interested, we are very interested in expanding the base of churches. Also, we're looking for food donations for the snacks and the lunches. We're writing grants basically to get food for all 70s a week, but in the meanwhile, we are taking donations of snacks and lunch materials. Arise also always needs money, and so if people wanna donate to support case management or other program needs, they can go to the Catholic Community Services website. The contacts, if you want to be involved in Arise, Maggie is the primary contact if churches wanna get involved. And then if you have questions about men, 'cause sometimes we get questions of, "Is so-and-so part of the program?" or "What's going on?" or gee, we see this person, Clarissa would be the one to talk about the actual case management or the people, or if you know, come across someone that you think is in the shelter, Clarissa is the person to talk to about that. So with that, we're available to questions?
Okay, thank you very much, Karen, and thanks to all of you for being here tonight. Council, yes, Don? 14 minutes.
Having helped cook dinner for Arise, I have a pretty good idea of what it's about. But I don't think maybe the general public doesn't quite understand what you do, and it's a fantastic thing they do, and I'll explain what I know about it, and then you can correct me. But basically, after the homeless people are screened, as you've explained, then one church will host those men for a night, and they all, usually there's a trailer, I think, that follows them around, that has bedrolls and stuff in there, and that they can roll out on the floor or whatever. So the church provides a nice warm place for them to sleep and get out of the elements, shower, or whatever. And a lot of these people have jobs, but they can't afford to get into housing. And by doing this, they get to save their money, and they get to the right support agencies, so they're able to get into long-term housing and get off. So it's kind of a rotating membership at each church, and then after 30 days, they move the trailer to a different church, and then the men stay there for 30 days, and it just kinda rotates through the community. And if you've ever had the opportunity, or get the opportunity to help with a dinner, I really highly recommend it. You get a whole different view of what homelessness is. I mean, these people are, you know, I hate to use the word "bumbs" because they're not. I mean, but, and they don't look like it, they just like, they look like your neighbor, and they're just on a little hard luck, and this has been a big step up for them, so it was one of the most rewarding things I've been able to do, is help do some feeding with them.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor? Yes, and I am very impressed with your numbers. I just sat here listening to Dwight and Carlisa, and I just kinda did a little calculations here. You mentioned that you successfully housed in 2012 53 out of 186 men, that's 28%, and then you followed that in 2013 by housing another 54 out of 140, which is 38%. That's fantastic. So I got a couple of questions that, as I recall, all of the men, and I did have an opportunity to do what Don did at the Salvation Army some years ago, where I came in and cooked a meal, and I was very, very touched by the camaraderie with the men. I recall little stories of, you know, men, you know, saving food for each other, guys who didn't show up at the same time, they worked late, they couldn't get there when the food was served, they thought about the other guy and said, "Hey, let's save some for this person," and they would remind the people that were serving the food, that kinda thing. So there's a camaraderie there, and these were normal guys. You know, and anybody who, you know, uses the word "bum," I reject that, you know, because these are just men who just happen to be dislocated in time, and you guys helped them do that, which comes to my next question. Some of these men, you mentioned that many of these men are from the area, so they got family members, maybe kids, spouses. Is any of your stories in terms of getting men housed connected to reconnecting them with their families?
Definitely.
I'd like to hear about that.
Definitely. We have worked with several men. Last year, I had a gentleman, he was 62 years old, and because of his mental state at the time, him and his wife began to separate. Children went towards mom, he was left out in the cold. But by him coming into the program, we were able to sit down and discuss those things, and dig a little bit deeper and find out what was really going on. He was a vet, he had no income, he wasn't able to work anymore. He was suffering from PTSD without treatment. And so once we found those things out and connected him to the services that he needed, within a few months, he was able to go back home.
That's fantastic.
And he's living really well now with his wife.
I think that's important, you know, as we get men back into housing, getting them reconnected with their families, that just creates more thriving communities when we can create that. Sometimes programs seem to, you know, push against that, and it's one way or the other, so I really like that. The other thing, in reading your report, I just kinda glanced and saw a sentence that just reached out to me, that talks, under the current impact, community impact, it talks about, "Up and now, rental vacancy rates are low in King County, which makes it very difficult for low-income people who are trying to find housing. People with adequate income will often compete with the low-income population for the very limited supply of lower-cost housing," which brings back to Arise that question about how critical it is for us to think about that in terms of all of this work that's being done also. So, "The lack of affordable housing and lack of higher-paying jobs leads to homelessness." So that's a message that needs to be repeated throughout the community, so people can understand the importance of living wages, and people being able to earn a living that can allow them to have a market-rate unit. So, thank you, impressive, I'm very impressed with the work you're doing, and keep up the great work, and I promise I'll come out there and do some cooking sometime soon.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brower?
I just wonder if you could touch on what facilities a church needs to have?
They have, well, you guys might have, they need a room that they're prepared to heat overnight. They don't have to have showers. We're lucky enough in that Salvation Army have put showers into their facility, and we'll put it, in the next couple of months, we'll see those opened up, they're testing them out right now. So we just need a safe place, it needs to be warm, site manager's there, so we don't need...
So in most, we use cafeteria areas, some have gymnasium areas, and then in that space, we can fit 25 mats safely, and be able to have those men, we have a couple churches that actually allow us to use their sanctuary.
Wow. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions from council? Yes, Bob?
Only two of our panelists' families are host churches right now, have showers.
Okay, well, we really appreciate you coming out, and I've had the pleasure to meet all of you in different locations, and it's great, the dedicated work you do is just tremendous in this community, and we really appreciate it very much. So, thank you for taking the time to present this, and certainly, we will do everything we can to get people plugged into you to pick up those items that you particularly need. More churches, we'll try with that, but food donations certainly, and dollar donations, and so, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one item, and then I'll turn it back to you. We have some good news for the council and the community. The Pewtersham Regional Council has awarded a $346,000 federal grant to our Lake Washington Loop Trail project. That's the project that'll provide a regional trail for pedestrians and bicyclists extending from the Cedar River Trail to the north city limits along Airport Way and Rainier Avenue. Trail will include a 12-foot-wide paved path separated from travel lanes in the street by an eight-foot landscape strip. This grant will pay for planning and design of the project in 2015. The total cost of the project is estimated to be around $5 million, and construction is scheduled to be completed in 2017. So we're on our way towards completing that trail. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. While we're in administrative report, a couple things. First of all, I wanted to talk about Saturday. We had a great neighborhood program training session, it was titled "Neighbor to Neighbor." Councilmember Prince and councilmember Palmer were there, along with about 75, I'd say, neighborhood people who came. I wanted to just really thank our employees, department heads, and other employees that gave up their Saturday to be there to help work with people and figure out ways to enhance the quality of life in their neighborhoods. Mr. Prince, did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, I was gonna kinda commend the, our employees for all the hard work, especially getting up so early and making the meal for all the neighborhood leaders. And also, I had an opportunity to talk to some of the neighborhood leaders in my neighborhood who were there, and they just found it to be very value-added. So, big thank you to everyone involved.
I think Ms. Palmer, did you?
I had so many comments at the end that this was the best, that people that have gone to all of them, just thought this was the most productive, informative, and best use of time. I think the combination of the speakers and the time to, for them to network together, and for the neighborhood leaders to share their successes with newer neighborhood associations, I just think it's wonderful.
Yeah, it was very nice, and once again, we owe gratitude to Lowe's, Ace Hardware, and McLendons for donating door prizes, and so it was a very nice event. So, thank you for participating, you too, that was nice. The other thing I wanted to do during this report is, as you know, King County is going to, or wants to, come forward with a transportation benefit district that will be a vote to the people, and that is to preserve the bus service. There's gonna be 17% cut in metro transit services to the public if they don't find a funding source. And they're coming forward with both a transit and roads package in April, and certainly would like cities to support it. Greg Zimmerman is here to fill you in on some of the detail, I know he's provided you with some, but please feel free to ask any questions that you might have. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Back on January 27th, during the Committee of the Whole, I provided a briefing on King County's transportation benefit district proposal. So I won't spend a lot of time going through that again, I just wanna hit some of the key points. Today, the King County Council, during their council meeting today, unanimously approved the formation of the transportation benefit district. The district will meet later this month, of course, the district members are the King County Council members, and will make a decision on when and if, and I think the decision's pretty much made, to go forward with a ballot measure. We're hearing, of course, April 22 would be the timeframe of that. The ballot measure would ask the voters of King County to approve two funding sources, a $60 annual vehicle fee, which would take effect after the current $20 congestion reduction charge expires in June 2014. So right now, residents are paying $20 additionally, that expires, and then the $60 would come in after that $20 expired. So it would be a net effect of a $40 increase over what people are paying for the vehicle license right now. And then on top of that, that would, is predicted to bring in a revenue, a tax revenue source of $80 million per year roughly. And then the second increase that the voters would be asked to vote upon is a 0.1% increase in sales tax, which would bring in $50 million per year. The sales tax portion of this proposal would expire in 10 years, but the car fee, the vehicle license fee, would continue on. The revenue would be distributed 60% to metro transit, which would be about $80 million a year, and then 40% to cities and king counties for road and transportation purposes. That distribution would be a direct distribution made by population of the jurisdictions, and Renton's number would be 2.5 million from that distribution per year. Of course, it'll change over time, but that would be the first year. And then, there's another provision in there for, it's a low-income discount, there'd be a $20 discount on the vehicle license fee for low-income households, so they would only have to pay 40 rather than the full 60, and that would be for households with a median income, 40% of the, 45% of the median income. King County has estimated that the average household impact, if this got, if the public did vote for this ballot measure, would be about $11 per month, so that would be how much people would be paying. Should the ballot measure pass, King County assures us that the 17% reduction in metro transit service that Mayor LaJase spoke about would not, would, that budget gap would be filled, and they would not need to make those reductions, so there would be no reductions in the metro service. If Metro does reduce their transit routes in 2014, because they don't have enough revenue to keep them going, in Renton, six routes would be deleted, 10 routes would be reduced or revised, these are the routes within the city of Renton, and Renton's six largest routes would not be impacted. So it would be the smaller routes that would be really impacted by these reductions in Renton. Overall, 33,000 transit service hours in Renton would be reduced, and that's out of a total of a little over 300,000. So you can see, it's a significant reduction, especially on these smaller routes. And for the 10 routes in Renton where the service would be reduced through less bus routes, or cutting off the hours earlier in the evening, various things that they're doing on those routes, the reduction rate would range between 2% reduction all the way up to 34% reduction on these 10 different routes. So, people that have, that need these routes for specialty destinations will... So, people that have, that need these routes for specialty destinations will, would be feeling the effect. Although I think we've all been aware that some of the other jurisdictions are being hit much more heavily by these 17% reductions than Renton is. But Renton also will be feeling the effects. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will meet this coming Wednesday, and will recommend approval by the cities of action in support of this transportation benefit district. So it might be one of the things that we were thinking of is, at this point, it might be something you'd want to consider having the city take a position on. So that's one of the reasons we wanted to bring it to you before you again, because King County's just adopted it, and the Sound Cities Association will be working on a recommendation. So if you have any questions, we have a lot of individual information about each transit route, but we didn't want to, it would have been a pretty prolonged presentation if we went through that. But we can answer specific questions if you have any.
Mr. Prince?
Yeah, so, I'm gonna be at the PIC on Wednesday night, so it'd be really good to get some guidance from council on what they want us to do on this, what they want Renton to do on this.
And Mr. Person?
Earlier, Greg, when we discussed this, there was proposed ordinances by King County. One which absolutely committed the money, and the other one that was just gonna kind of leave it wishy-washy so the county council could do whatever it wanted to do.
You're talking about the roads portion of the, and that is secured.
And that's what I want to know.
That is secured. It's absolutely assured that 40% will go to roads, and it'll be based on per capita population. And in fact, there's some discussion right now that that would actually be in the ballot measure.
I mean, I, I guess I, I'm always the guy that is a little wary of King County and living up to what they say they're going to do. They seem to be doing better nowadays, but I, I mean, that is a concern. Without that, without that absolute assurance, there's, I would not want the council to support this. With that in there, I can't, you know, it's, it's kind of like you can't throw the baby out with the wash water. I mean, that transit is so important to so many people that, that we really need it. So, you know, at least we're getting a little bit of a bone.
I think what's really important, there's two things to keep in mind. Number one, King County is rolling this forward because the state has failed over the course of a year and a half to pass a transportation package. And, and the reality is what you just mentioned, Mr. Person, and that is, there will be a lot of people throughout King County that are impacted by the transit cuts. That being said, it's still a lot of money. And, and so, it's, you know, the voters will, will be able to decide whether they think it's worth paying, or if they're willing to give up the transit, you know, and not pay that fee. I, I think it's in the best interest of the city to allow the voters to make that decision. And so that's why we're bringing this forward to, to get your temperature on it and see how you feel.
And I, and I agree with you, but without that provision, that they're gonna spend it the way we are, that's just a big issue to me.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you for the clarification on that. That was something that I was interested in also, but I didn't have much doubt that King County would try to figure out something that would be, you know, acceptable to the county, for the city. So, I, I don't have a problem in moving forward with, you know, the recommendation that PIC is going to make, you know, and that, I think I agree with the mayor, that it is important, you know, that, you know, we let the voters decide on it, and they're gonna decide whether or not they want to be taxed on it. And certainly, you know, they understand what the consequences would be in terms of the impacts, in terms of transit, so.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Yes, Ms. Palmer?
Today I heard that there may be some movement in Olympia on the senate side to bring forward a transportation package?
It's...
Ed's shaking his head, no.
Feedback we're receiving is...
Okay, so I, my question was, is if, by some miracle, they actually did something, would King County still put this to a vote?
If they actually came, let's just say...
They actually did.
That you were gonna win the lottery, and at the same time, King County, or the state was gonna come out with a viable transportation package.
Yeah.
And it'll happen on the same day, by the way.
Yes.
If that were to happen, King County has the option not to roll it forward.
Right. And we'll know that long before April 22nd. Well, just something that one of the members of the Regional Transit Committee said last month was, it's a lot of money to ask of the taxpayers, especially when you're asking people that don't use transit. But on the other hand, if there's a bus carrying 40 or 60 people that doesn't run anymore, you're putting 40 or just 60 cars in my lanes on the freeway. So you have to balance. And, and South County particularly will be hard-hit.
It would. You're absolutely right.
They're very, much more dependent, I think, than any, anywhere else.
Exactly. It's true. Any other comments from council? What I'd like to suggest, if you don't have any objections, is that the city sends a letter of support to King County for this ballot measure with the caveat that specifies we're supporting the breakdown, is what Mr. Person was talking about, unless there's objections to weighing in. Okay? Not hearing anything? We'll move on with that. Thank you very much, Greg. Appreciate it. Moving on to audience comment, we have Howard McComber signed up. He knows the rules.
Howard McComber, I live in the Renton Highlands. I think we've had a really evening, really nice evening. We've had the people from SCORE come, and as positive as they can for a very difficult situation. I think that's, that's positive. Then, my friends from REACH were here, and I think the city's done tremendous things in helping REACH. The city are a bunch of volunteers. You guys do wonderful volunteer outreach, and it makes a tremendous difference. Where we succeed is where we work together. We have to cooperate, we have to see what we can each contribute, and then we make something that works. I'm in the Renton Highlands. Our area is the most diverse, I think, in all of Renton. I don't know if anybody can match us. We have more diversity. We have guys who have blonde hair, the color of bride, for good reasons. I earned every bit. And the same thing, we have all the ethnic groups and everybody else here. This is, this is where we start off, and this is an area where we need helpers. We need people who will participate. And so, I think, this is my stroke for affordable housing, if we can have affordable housing, where we can have people who will buy and stay in these homes, who will live in the neighborhood, where they can help be part of the base that keeps things going. We have some wonderful people. We have Dr. Fawcett there from the Highlands Elementary School. That lady is fabulous, and she does wonderful work. And we have community and schools that work there. We have a lot of people who are needed, and if you have people in the area who are part of the growth, part of the support, then you have people that can help move it along. It's, I think it's the ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure if we have proper programs going on that help our young people, that then they don't become problems in SCORE. What we want to do is have it so that we have more and more positive things. This is a city of positive things. You guys are all working at it. I think Don has cooked meals for everybody everywhere. I think that's just true, and I appreciate that. And it's just, we serve each other, and as we work together, then we're gonna succeed. You will see me again, and I'll call you individually and go through my later. They will work out the details, but we do need to have a constant improvement. And as we do it, we're gonna succeed, and we're gonna keep having the best place in all of Seattle area to live, which is right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. There are seven items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member liked polled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
I'd like to remove item C.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
Seeing, I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented without item C.
Second? Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the consent agenda minus item C. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, item C is from Community Services Department, asking for approval to waive the golf course green fees in the amount of $2,900 for the Liberty High School girls' golf team for the spring season of 2014. And it is to refer to the Finance Committee. And I would just like to ask the council to approve it. It's something that we do with all of our local high schools, is that we waive those fees, and I don't really see the need that it be brought to the Finance Committee to do that, so.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council approve to waive the golf course green fees for Liberty High. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Paboni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Breyer? You've been working.
We have been working. The Finance Committee met today, and there are three committee meeting reports, committee reports.
Hey, Finance Committee, committee report. Approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on February 10, 2014. Claims, claim vouchers 326-993 through 327-297. Five wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $6,142,791.56. And payroll vouchers including 722 direct deposits and 59 payroll checks totaling $1,947,731.57. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
I'm willing that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next committee report is regarding the utility bill adjustment. The Finance Committee recommends granting the waiver requested for sewer and King County metro-related charges from a water leak at the service address of 1428 Kirkland Avenue Northeast, Pillar Real, Pillar Real Northwest Real Estate, as presented for the total amount of $5,580.66. The adjustment includes city sewer, $1,966.14, and King County metro, $3,614.52, which are charges above their normal usage. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
Any of, any of you that have sat through these meetings with me, I just hate to give back any money on these issues. And in this case, the house was vacant, and the pipes froze and caused the leak. And we have in our policy that we will not give them, waive the fees for the water loss. However, because it didn't run through the city sewer or the metro charges, we can give them the break on those charges. So with that, I'd like to, council to concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second?
Mr. Mayor? It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. Mr. Corman?
Yeah, I actually have no issue in principle with this. I did have a question. I, was this, I'm trying to think of the address. Is this a multi-family?
It's a duplex.
The duplex?
It's a vacant duplex that's owned by, or in being managed by this Pillar Northwest. And so, it apparently was probably leaking due to ice damage and then thawed out, and so the water was going into the house.
And I always forget, I guess we changed to where we do capacity charges for the sewer. I mean, I presume we would have looked at that. Like, I, I think, I thought that at one point, we treated duplexes like single-family houses where there was just a flat fee for sewer, but it...
It's based on the water consumption.
It's based on the water consumption. So, I mean, as long as we're sure of that.
Greg Zimmerman shaking his head, yes.
Yes.
So that...
That's as much assurance as you're gonna make.
I would, I would have to assume it was, since we have an exact amount that we deserve to refund, so.
Any, any further questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next Finance Committee report is a lease agreement for the Cedar River Boat House. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence to the staff recommendation to approve the five-year lease agreement with the George Pocock Rowing Foundation for the Cedar River Boat House in the amount of $90,568 over the five-year term. The committee also recommends that the mayoral city clerk be authorized to execute the lease. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
I guess as long as I'm talking, I'll talk about this one a little bit, too. This is a new vendor that's going to be managing the boathouse, and it's gonna be kind of exciting because they'll be able to offer additional opportunities, especially to children in rowing, that we haven't been able to do with the previous people. They also will, will be saving us some money in the process. So, we hope that over the next six weeks or so, that the current people will be out, the tenant improvement work will be done, and they'll be, they'll start doing their marketing right away for their spring and summer classes. So, with that, I move that Finance Committee, that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I also believe they'll be operating year-round rather than just seasonal.
Yes, I believe that so, so.
It's gonna be a nice addition. Thank you, Ms. Breyer. Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business.
He thought I was gonna miss you, didn't he?
I did. I did.
I've done that occasionally. Okay, we have no resolutions or ordinances, so we'll move on to new business. Mr. Person?
Yes, first order of business is next Monday, February 17. It's a council holiday, so there'll be no meeting. It's President's Day. And then, on February 24th at 6:00 PM, committee of the whole will meet in the council chambers. We have one topic, and it's called Energize Eastside Briefing. And for the public's information, this is the issue with Puget Power where they're planning to enlarge the power lines, and they have two routes through Renton. And our staff has been really on top of this. And so we're gonna not get a presentation from PSC that's gonna try and convince us of anything. We're gonna get Mr. Zimmerman, who's gonna give us the facts and nothing but the facts so that we know what's going on. And also, what's interesting is, is that, well, we will definitely influence this decision. We are not the decision-makers in this. It's gonna be Puget Power, but we fully intend, as a council, to listen to everything and do what we can do to make it the best possible. And so, if people wanted direct questions to us, well, we may not be able to answer them. We'll be able to get you to the right person.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Palmer.
Yes, the Transportation Aviation Committee is going to meet, not this week, but the following week, Thursday, February 20. We'll be meeting at 4:00 PM in the council conference room, and we have seven items on the agenda. Yeah, we're gonna work hard. The first is emerging issues in transportation. Second is the State Aerospace Industry Appropriation Grant for the Central Sound Aerospace Training Center that we will be leading the building on at our airport. Third is amendment to the SRG partnership contract for the Central Sound Aerospace Training Center. Fourth is the 2014-15 ORCA Business Passport Contract. ORCA's the card you use on all our transit systems. Five is the budget increase for Rainier Avenue South Improvement Project. Six is the budget increase for Garden Avenue North Widening Project. And finally, construction management services with Petite Inc., Supplemental Agreement Number Three. So that's our transportation. I also wanted to mention that on Saturday, after the neighbor-to-neighbor meeting was over, I went over to the open house being held at Station 11. And because this is Hart Month, each of the stations are open on a different Saturday. This Saturday will be Station 12 up in the Highlands. I imagine it's the same, 10 to 2. Drop by, they'll take your blood pressure, prick your finger, I had mine done this morning at Honeydew, and just get to know your firefighters. So, Honeydew today, just so you know, I went up there because they were doing all the fourth and fifth grade classes, and I have a fourth-grade mentee there. They found two children while I was there in a little over an hour with high blood pressure. And the little girl was pretty significant. And so what they did is they give the card like they always do, but then they also rode up and pass it on to the school nurse, who will be following up. So I think, boy, that's worth it right there, the whole thing. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corman?
Uh, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have no, uh, meetings to announce, but, um, being that this is Black History Month, and I must confess, I've been a bit remiss in the first, uh, Monday of the month in not, uh, bringing this out, but I chose that I would just mention some of the, uh, renowned black individuals throughout history, uh, who maybe some of us don't know about, and so I got a list of some folks I wanted to just talk about. Uh, the first one is, I'm sure this one may ring a bell to many people, Elijah McCoy, who invented the automatic lubrication system for locomotive engines, and had so many inventions that people would ask, is that a McCoy? And that's where the word McCoy came from. Um, also, there was a gentleman by the name of Louis Latimer, he was the right-hand man to Thomas Edison, he invented the filament to make the light bulb work for more than two, two to three days, he also invented the electric lamp, he did pioneer work in incandescent and fluorescent lighting with, uh, who died, he diagrammed the telephone for Alexander Graham Bell, he invented the sugar crystallization process, hello Starbucks, I'll take my raw sugar. Um, he was a tremendous inventor in his own right, yet no one knows about him. Um, then it was Daniel Hale Williams, the first successful open-heart surgery in the world, he had an operative mortality rate of only one and a half percent. Then, of course, there was Andrew Bearden, he invented the automatic railroad car coupler that spurred the Industrial Revolution. Henrietta BlackBerry, she invented the underwater cannon system that made it possible to launch torpedoes during the war. Uh, Madam CJ Walker, uh, she, uh, had designed and, uh, created cosmetics for women with dark skin, she was the first woman of any nationality to become a millionaire on her own efforts. Uh, then there was Dr. Charles Drew, blood banking, his contribution to blood plasma. We got Juan Metzleger, who invented the automatic mass shoe-making machine, um, and, uh, that was pretty, uh, important to the shoe, uh, industry. Of course, there's Charles Brooks, who invented the street sweeping machine, Frederick Jones, who, uh, invented refrigerated trucks, which later, uh, was adopted for boats, planes, and trains. And then, uh, lastly, there was Garrett Morgan, the traffic, who invented the traffic light signal and gas mask during the war. So these, I thought I would find some names that weren't real common, that people don't hear about, and, and since we're gonna have a break next week, I thought that I would load it up a little bit tonight, but I will be back with, uh, a few renowned, uh, names of individuals that goes back beyond the Gregorian calendar into antiquity for our last Monday meeting, but, uh, let's celebrate Black History Month, and those kids at home who don't know about these individuals, I recommend you do some research, learn about them, and that's all a part of people really identifying with their history, learning how to feel good about their history. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Brier?
Uh, yes, the Finance Committee will meet on Monday, the twenty-fourth of February, uh, at five-thirty, uh, we don't have a committee of the, oh, we do have a committee, okay, never mind, that was another day, uh, anyway, we'll be meeting at five-thirty, um, we have an amendment to the RMC, this five-dash-five business licenses, vouchers, and emerging issues in revenue streams, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on the twentieth, uh, Thursday, three o'clock on Thursday, we have a planning and development committee, um, in the council conference room, will be discussing marijuana code update briefing, and the docket number ten briefing. I also wanna mention, uh, last Thursday, I had the opportunity to go over to Tiffany Park, where some of the neighbors organized a community meeting about development, go, excuse me, going in, and I wanna commend, uh, CED and Raquel and Chip for the excellent job they did presenting. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, that's, uh, planned development for, I think it's a hundred houses, Jay, is that correct? I'll ask him tomorrow. Oh, I missed my chance, I've been waiting all night. Okay, well, thanks, Mr. Prince. Um, audience comment, anybody wanna address the council?
Hi, I'm Judy Toback, longtime resident of Renton, I've been asked, uh, when is the library demolition gonna start preceding the construction of the new library? I said, well, I'm gonna come down to a Renton council meeting and ask.
Uh, let me see, uh, Mr. Renner, can you provide an idea?
Uh, yes, for both of the libraries, the building permit applications are in and the use permits in, uh, regarding the downtown, uh, library over the river, um, uh, there was about fifty structural comments that were made by the outsourced structural engineer that the city uses, and, uh, we expect to get response to those and, and, uh, clarification on the, uh, per, on the permit prints and specifications, uh, within the month, and then, uh, they will proceed to their contractor selection process, which also takes a month to six weeks, and so we are anticipating, uh, early, uh, late spring, early summer, uh, groundbreaking potentially, uh, there don't seem to be any additional, um, hangups with permitting, uh, from any of the agencies, and, uh, in the Highlands, uh, that's moving along quite well, on much the same schedule, so we're also anticipating a, a summer, uh, start for that one. Did I misspeak at all? Okay, good.
Okay, thank you, Peter. To the wish of the council?
Will be adjourned.
Second? Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, will be adjourned, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
[inaudible]
We have a head-on accident, vehicles were traveling approximately forty to fifty miles an hour, we have an unconscious infant with a laceration to the head, as well as an unconscious [inaudible].